Everyone. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Olivet's. Meeting here we have at the city hall. Can we please have roll call?
Mayor Clark.
Present.
Chairman Pro Tem Wile is absent with an excuse. Councilmember Solomonoff.
Yeah.
Councilmember Pashon Helman.
Here.
Councilmember Lewis.
Present.
Okay, now for our communications.
I have no written communication.
Thank you very much. And now we'll have our city managers report.
Good evening. Show my screen here. All right, good evening, everyone. We have a number of things going on, including a excessive heat warning for at least the rest of this week. We have pushed this out on social media primarily to remind everyone that the city's code does allow construction projects with approved building permits to begin work at six thirty in the morning instead of the regular seven in the morning during excessive heat warnings. And then, once the excessive heat warning has been lifted, then those construction workers will have to start at seven again previously, so. And this is a great time for tomorrow is the Splish Splash and Popsicle Dash at Worson Park from five to six P M. It's a free event for for the for the young and the young at heart to come out to Worson Park, the splash pad, and enjoy some popsicles and fun. You may have noticed the table that is set up right outside the council chambers here. We are a sort of kind of a polling station, if you will. For East West Gateway, they are seeking public comment regarding their fiscal years twenty twenty-six through twenty twenty-nine Transportation Improvement Program, their TIP program. So they're seeking comment through August first. You are welcome to peruse the proposed projects that are there on the table and provide your comments and put them in the box. You can also scan the available Q R code and review those projects online and provide your comments online. So we would encourage residents to provide their their comments to any of those projects. Unfortunately, there is not a project in Olivet. But as members of the region controlled by East West Gateway, you are welcome to comment on anyone else's projects or just, you know, see what's in the pipeline. Part of our sixtieth anniversary for Parks and Recreation is our Saints Throwback Skate, which is Saturday, August sixteenth. So some of you may know, if you grew up in Olivet, that our location of Five Oaks is the previous location of the Saints Roller Rink, hence the roller skating party. So we encourage families and adults to come out and enjoy the day with us skating. Family-oriented skate is from one to three P M. And then adult-only skating is from six P M to nine P M. So we encourage everybody to purchase tickets. And again, the Q R code will take you to the registration page. And again, celebrating our sixtieth anniversary of Parks and Recreation is a trivia night at Five Oaks on September sixth. So it's a decades-themed trivia night, tables of eight. So again, we would encourage everyone to gather your neighbors or your friends and your family and pick up a table and join us at the gym in Five Oaks for trivia night. And our police department, many of you know that our police officers participate in the torch run, which is part of Special Olympics. But this year, the Special Olympics of Missouri is hosting a Guardian Games, sort of like an Olympic Games for for the community and for individuals with special needs. And our own Officer Heron, Officer Octavia Heron, will be participating on Saturday, October fourth, ten A M. at Chaffas Arena. So if you can come out and support Officer Heron, we would appreciate that, as well as supporting the Special Olympic athletes. And all of these notices, as well as several others, are posted every week in the city's weekly newsletter this week in Olivet. And we would encourage everyone to sign up for that. Those newsletters come out on Monday. And that, other than your next upcoming meetings, are on the screen for August. Is all I have unless you have any questions of me.
I just have one question about the timing of the did the Splish Splash Popsicle Dash? Did that time change? I had three o'clock. Or did I just get it wrong? Okay.
Yeah, from five to six, yeah. I will next.
Right, now we will have our staff reports.
All right, starting with the fire department. So up at the top, you'll see the fire department doing some hose training. You can see that they are using the fire hydrant that's located right outside the apparatus bay to test their hose, as well as practice using their hose. So this is their training. And every once in a while, they get to use their hose skills for something fun. And they were invited by Emmanuel Lutheran to come and to spray their day camp kids on water day. And so they did that last week. And as you can see them down below, working with the kids, helping the kids and getting the kids appropriately wet. Of course, I'm sure right before their parents came to pick them up. But it's a good community engagement for the fire department. Parks and Rec. July, whoops. As we know, July is Parks and Rec Month. And so some of the activities last week were the chalk the walk up to Five Oaks, as well as the Sweet Reads and Mobile Library came out for folks to check out books from St. Louis County. I'm happy to report that soccer registration has closed, and we have eleven hundred-plus players, which is an increase from last year, for a total of ninety-five teams. So we will have a lot of soccer being played in Olivet. It's a good thing we're buying new goals for those kiddos. And this little thing right here is a turf tank. And this company creates this robot who will paint the fields for you. And if you paint a soccer field by hand, that can take staff like two days to do that. And we have at Worson Park five fields. So it's days to do that, to make sure that the lines are straight and you do all the interior lines and it's perfectly square. So the company Turf Tank is coming out to do a demo at Worson Park, and they will stripe our create our fields for us, all five of those fields up at Worson Park. And they'll do it in a couple hours. So it is a very wonderful service for us that that we can be this demo for them.
Can we do a demo on Stacy Park, too?
Uh, you know, we appreciate what we get. Yeah, so we're we're not gonna. We're gonna appreciate what we get.
Do you pay per field or how does?
They're they're using us as a sales pitch, and we are going to be happy to let them use us as their sales pitch.
Too deep to his confidence.
He is, he is. So from planning, many of you have seen Irvington Place. They are continuing to to build. This is from June of twenty twenty-four till July of twenty twenty-five. The planning staff are going out there weekly to inspect the units. And I know last time the council was here, there was a comment from a resident about parking. And Mr. Trejo did contact the point of contact at Brinkman about those parking concerns. So staff is working with Brinkman to get them to park appropriately. We have also offered them to park at ninety-two oh one Olive, now that we have closed on that. And and we're not using it for anything. That's a good location for their workers to park their vehicles. We've also offered them the lot with the salt dome. Because again, we're not using that lot. So we are working with them for those things. And then the police department. If you have already gone through the basic Citizens Police Academy, then you are welcome to go through the Advanced Citizen Police Academy. It is again hosted by the Olivet P D. in conjunction with a number of their neighboring police departments. So the class begins September third and runs for six weeks. So we would ask you to follow the Q R code to sign up. You will be directed to the Creve Court Police Department page, and that's just because they are handling signups. You will be at the right place, though. And then lastly, Public Works. Our Public Works folks have been busy doing concrete and asphalt repairs throughout the city of Olivet. And they are doing that as, you know, as the weather allows and as the heat allows as well. So with that, I can answer any of your questions?
Any questions from the council? Okay, say none. We'll go into our monthly financial report from our Director of Finance, Mr. Darren Mann.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. We have our full year report, unaudited and bare bare bones cash presentation compared to what we see on the modified accrual for audit. And what we see for the full year, not much developed from what we saw last month. We are on the sales tax side, we'll look at a chart here in a second. But we will see some of the the upswing from the all degree of that opening in February. Reserve policy, again, like we talked about last month when we did our budget, well within compliance of that first year. It's that that fifth year that is causing us trouble that we're working on solutions for. Now, property tax collections, as we go down the the big list of the quarter, the ones that provide roughly a quarter each of our revenue. The property taxes are in it a little bit above because of that new construction figure. And utility taxes remain positive. The water of of all of them was kind of the outlier for that provided positives there. Parks and Rec, that category actually remains behind expectations. But that membership line is the one that was really lagging as we ended the year. City managers talked about the soccer signups did very well this year, and that provided a big boost going into the end of the year. Licenses ahead of budget in that remainder category. And everything else kind of, again, was about where we expected. The on the expenditure side, we did not see the surge of kind of the filling of budgets that we would normally see. And so it did end up a little bit better than we had anticipated a month ago. Hopefully, that rolls into some of that fund balance considerations as we enter our audit. Let's go to the chart, next chart here. So I'll start at the bottom one, the beating heart of the of our sales taxes. And so these charts are put together to kind of explain what was happening with our sales tax. The bottom green line is the per capita. Is that right? It's a per capita. And so I'll read off just a little short section of the sharing mechanism. It's an I can get to anybody the revised statute for it. But it's twenty-five point five times the log base ten times point zero zero three five times the per capita sales less the countywide average. And that's how we share. So I'm sure there's a ton of great math behind all this, but it's really hard to get close. I can get close on half, but I can't get ever get the countywide average out of the county. And it changes every ten years because per capita, every time you do a the dicentennial, you know, the census, it all changes. And so the calculations can change. What does it mean for us? As that green line gets bigger and bigger compared to a countywide average, which again, is moving and it is hard to get out of the county what exactly that is. We do get it from the municipal league about once a year, we can kind of get there. But if we were to compare that green line to the countywide average, as that green line goes above, you'll see the rest of this stuff, the sharing, which is the blue line, right? Dark blue, yes, sorry, yep, yep. You'll see that increase. What we have seen there, the green line is lowered in the last couple of years. Now, the interesting thing here, if we redo this kind of chart in a little bit different way and take out all everything, that's like the all the the variables that go into it, you can see in the top chart. And the green part of the top chart is exactly what we saw in the sales tax chart of where things go year after year. And this is by month and not by year. So if we were to to look at that, the white line is actually what was collected in the city of Olivet. And the gap between the white line and the green line is the sharing. And you can see it spike and come and go between the two charts there. But there's the relationship. And what do we see here more than anything is the last couple of years have been, you know, not great. The white line and the green line match up because there is no sharing because we're not above the countywide average. Okay, if we were to look through history, the last ten, twelve months on the right side of that chart on the top is what you would see in the city of Olivet for for decades. And here is kind of, so a precursor to what we were saying, why? How did we get here in in some of these ways? And how is it? Why is it hard to predict? Because we don't know what the countywide average is. And we don't really know. It's hard to say what our retailers are doing specifically when it came to a single business doing one book of business with. This also goes to, there's a couple of things. One book of business with more than likely just a couple of people turning all this, these these kind of titling and these things in. And then you throw in something like timing differences at the state. And then you throw in something like COVID, where they're really having trouble staffing. And you get really strange amounts, and you get unpredictable revenue, which then creates hard-to-budget and a big fund balance. So that was a precursor to a little bit of what we'll talk about over the next several months. And so I dug out these old charts. That's all I have for the monthly financial report. Sure. Right, as we look from the last three months, where total investments are roughly a million lower than what we we saw just three months ago. And that's for some cash needs. At the in the last three months, we've bought a piece of property. We have made the pension payments for the second half of what we collected from the property taxes. And then, again, like the sales taxes have been lower than they had in the past several years. And so we're starting to kind of eat into some of that. This is the same thing that would rhyme with kind of eating into your fund balance slowly, but surely. This is also a time after your property taxes are collected. Again, roughly quarter of our revenue, this is the dry time for any any government dependent on property taxes. And that dry time starts now, and it will continue into November into December. And so we'll kind of start to see these things kind of dwindle down and lower. I don't anticipate a whole lot more cash needs that we won't be reimbursed for, something like the the property purchase at ninety-two oh one. So the plan is to maintain that twelve-month ladder of those CDs that keep coming over in one rung per month. That's what we see there outside of that gray column on the maturity dates. The longer rates are at five percent. The yields are at the final right column, and the grays at the bottom. Those are long-term investments at five percent, a nice baseline income. And then the top three are those rolling three-month Treasury bills. And you can see there they're holding in at the four something percents. That's the number that I thought was going to drop off a little bit more. And that's what helped us at the final step of our budgeting, some of the investment income increases. That's those are also the numbers you'll see this will kind of weigh that with the liquidity to you'll see kind of drop down. This is also, so we're at four percent here for this roughly seven and a half million that is in those top three rungs. That's in addition to several million in the I C S at two percent, which is hundred percent liquid. And then the just idle cash, like two fifty to two hundred. It's about a million dollars. So there's the different tiers. You had asked last time, like the tiers of the the earnings, just to make sure it's not sitting idle and earning nothing. So that's all I have for the invest month, sorry, quarterly investment report.
Thank you, Mr. Mann.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes, you can, sir.
For the three that are maturing or have matured already?
Yeah.
What are we going to do with that? Are we just turning that over to another Treasury bill?
That's right, those will roll. So the one that seven fifteen, it went into roughly ten fifteen. Or in October fifteenth, we'll see those keep rolling three months at a time. So every month, we got about two and a half to two point two, two point three million dollars. So we can decide what are those cash needs were at that time, about once a month. Yep.
Got it.
Good question.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go into our city council reports. I'll start with my to the right, your left, with Councilmember Solomonoff.
No reporter this time.
Thank you very much, sir. And to my left, Pashon Helm.
Okay, I got a couple here. So July tenth, I attended the zoning board meeting. There were two home additions that were approved. I thought it was notable that both homes involved additions that increased the square footage while still keeping the original home intact. And I just felt like that was good to highlight when we have owners and builders that are choosing to keep the original home and just add on to it rather than tearing it down in favor of a new build. And then on July seventeenth, I went to a local celebration and check presentation event at the Bridge Center, where the folks at the Bridge Center, this is different from the Bridge, which is a separate nonprofit. The Bridge Center is a organization where folks come to play bridge. They raised ninety-one thousand dollars for the Alzheimer's Association. It was it was excellent. It was very exciting. That put them into the number two spot for bridge clubs throughout the United States for raising money for Alzheimer's and the number five organization of all organizations in the United States that raise money for the Alzheimer's Association. And what was super cool about that is they're both Olivet businesses. And so it was really neat to celebrate that synergy between two great community institutions here in Olivet. And then earlier today, I attended the Green Cities meeting. Olivet participates in the Green Cities Challenge through Olivet Parks and Recreation. And this challenge is a program that's operated through the Missouri Botanical Gardens Earthway Program, Earthway Center, rather. So the other cities that were present there, Collinsville, Webster Groves, Glen Carbon, Crestwood, Richmond Heights, and Maplewood. And the primary discussion topics there were on native plant and tree ordinances. And it was just a good opportunity to share information about what's going on in other communities and and what we're doing here in Olivet.
Okay, thanks very much.
Yep, on July seventeenth, we had our regularly scheduled P C D C meeting. Couple of notes is it was the first time in a long time that we actually had full attendance. As the council obviously knows, we've appointed two people recently. And so it was nice to have everyone in attendance, which will be very helpful to make sure we always have form moving forward. So it's it's been a while, so big thank you. And they were pretty happy about that. And then we had Ms. Carr there as well to help from a perspective of because we have new members to give an education of what is P C D C? What is our role in government? Because it is one of, I believe, the only board that must serve legally in the state of Missouri. It must be formed. And so it was important just to give them the understanding of what their role is, how things work. And then Mr. Trejo walked through all the details of, you know, how things are going to work, how things usually get brought forward, what is the process? So it's a little bit of education one-on-one to to the new members, which was very helpful as well. So.
Thank you, councilmembers. I had nothing to report at this time. However, at this point, we're going to go on from hearing from citizens. And I do have a card here. Add Larry, if you would like to come up, sir.
Larry Koenig, eleven thirty-one Hilltop. On, let's see, what is the date on this? On May nineteenth, I sent an email to Mr. Trejo. And the email said, my fence and also my neighbor's fences are overgrown with vegetation coming from the apartment property. Can the city contact them and clean up the fence line? And Mr. Trejo replied the same day and said he would contact them and ask them if they could maybe spray some weed killer on it and try and clean it up a little bit. And nothing happened. And on the twenty-third of June, I sent him another email that said nothing has been done, and I never heard anything back. And now we're here, two months later, and that's what my fence looks like. And I've got trees growing through the fence. It's damaging my fence. And this is why I came before the council on numerous occasions, asking you to require them to put up the same type of fence that separates stony towers from olive crossing. We would had a solid concrete fence, they could do whatever they want on that side. It wouldn't affect my property. But now this is affecting my property. I'm going to be putting my home on the market soon, and that's not going to help me trying to sell it.
Okay, we're going on to Bill number thirty forty-eight. And if we could have that title read, please.
Bill thirty forty-eight, an ordinance of the city of Olivet, Missouri, amending chapters two forty and three seventy-five, sections two forty point zero two zero and three seventy-five point zero one zero through three seventy-five point zero eight zero, adding definitions to alternative vehicles and adding operational regulations and restricted uses. Second reading.
Good evening, council. Beth Andreski, Chief of Police, and Beverly Tucker Knight, Parks and Rec. I think she's getting, she created a presentation on this, so. Take a second to pop up. I introduced you.
Thank you.
So we are back for the second reading. Again, this is regarding changes to our code on electronic and alternative vehicles. And we again work together kind of on this project because it obviously impacts the parks. And we're seeing more and more of these electric devices around town, which includes some complaints. So it was the right time to update our ordinances and look at the public safety aspect of this in both the parks and in the city in general. I'll let Beverly take it over. It was her baby, the slideshow, so.
We're going to tag team, we're sure. So as you all have probably seen, across the U S and in Olivet, e-bikes and other electric vehicles are really popular. They've come down in price. They're much more affordable now, and people love them. So we definitely are seeing an increase across Olivet. And as Chief Andreski noted, we are having a lot of complaints. And we're also seeing a lot of use of these vehicles in our parks, which is great when they're on the paved paths, but not so great when they're on the unpaved paths. And we believe strongly that the best way to serve our residents, to have them be able to enjoy their electric vehicles, is to make sure that we keep our city code up to date as far as technology, uses, and safe practices, and that we help promote through public education, safe and legal use, and make sure people know where they can use them, what's the best way to do it, and what's appropriate and what's inappropriate, and really make sure that they can have a great time because they are really fun. And I look forward to having my own. So. So today's bill has several different components to it. To make it simple and to not read you, we broke it apart and put it into different categories. So primarily what we're doing this evening is we're adding the definitions to all these alternative vehicles because there are so many different kinds. And then we're adding the operational regulations. We're putting them into the existing vehicle code, into the existing park codes, and then making it as clear as possible of so that we can enforce the same rules with these vehicles that we do for other vehicles and for other park uses. And then I'm going to turn it over to Chief Andreski for the definitions.
Do you want me to advance it for you? Sure. Yeah. Click. So these are two of them.
They'll be right up there.
Okay. So electric bicycle is there's so there's three classes of electric bikes. And as you can see, for yourself, it basically kind of regulates how they operate and a max speed for them. The class three is the twenty-eight miles per hour, which we'd expect to see on, expect to see on roadways more so. And then the other two, of course, are twenty miles per hour. And those are probably more so what, you know, some of what we're getting complaints with, with, you know, kind of younger kids riding them around town and things like that. And I think some of the issue that we've run into, some of the concern is that, as you can see even from like an E. And I think some of the issue that we've run into, some of the concern is that, as you can see even from like an E. Motorbike or dirt bike. If they're riding around town, people think these are motorcycles, right? Like things that all these young kids are riding around on motorcycles. And many times they just have that appearance. So the, again, the e-bike classifications come in too. And again, regulate basically how they operate and the max speed that they're capable of. So this is, that got a little bit hairy and trying to come up with this definition. Because if you look at this online, people kind of define electric MTDs or micro mobility transportation devices. It's a mouthful in different ways. So this is. The definition and the language we thought that was basically the easiest and most consistent across the board. We're doing our research. And this, of course, includes multiple types of devices. It can include electric bicycles, scooter, skateboards. The like hoverboards and then. I don't even know the one in the picture. It's like.
Yeah, that's the, that's the unicycle.
Unicycle. And again, sometimes you see these things described with different language. So it is a little bit hard to come up with that consistency. And people call them a variety of different things. So the pictures kind of help give you an idea what we're talking about.
Absolutely. This one, I've definitely know that where my old office was in the old community center. I watched some neighbors over there buy these and become very proficient. In the beginning, it was a little hairy watching them. They've really become very proficient. And now I actually see a gentleman commuting in the evenings on Old Bonham and one of these. It's very interesting because right now this gentleman's standing to go through an intersection, which is what our commuter on Old Bonham does. But then he'll crouch down and sit on top of it later. And you can, it's very difficult to see him in traffic. So it's, it's really good to have these, these visuals. And then everybody knows these guys.
This was another definition that, you know, we kind of played around with and talked about and looked how. You know, some of these things were being described with some of the old language and trying to update the language. But a play vehicle seemed to be, you know, seems to be the. Best verbiage for it to describe what we all know as kind of like the Barbie Jeeps and things like that. That usually are perusing around right on somebody's driveway who has small kids.
And in the park and on the greenways. And it's important to have this in there because, not because we want to regulate these, but we want to define them so we know what they are. So that if someone is pushing the envelope on a different vehicle, they can't say, oh, this is a toy. So it really helps us set that baseline of what is a toy and what isn't a toy. So then in the park chapter, we're adding five new rules and regulations. So these are going into a chapter that already exists. So we are prohibiting all bikes and electric vehicles from the unpaved park trails. So these are the Sassafras Trail, the Cottonwood Trail, our trails built by the volunteers that have wood chips on them. They're very uneven. They're very narrow. So they're totally inappropriate for a bicycle or an electronic vehicle of any type. We are also setting a maximum speed for all of these vehicles in the parks of fifteen miles per hour. So where it's legal for you to be on a bike, whether it's just a pedalist, just you're pedaling a regular bike or it's an electronic. Bike or an electronic assistance bike, you have to stay on fifteen miles per hour or under. And we're also allowing the class one, class two and bicycles and E-Pabs and MTD. I apologize, it's a lot of letters. We are allowing them on the park trails, but it's important that they yield to pedestrians. We're really trying to prevent pedestrian and vehicle collisions. Because those are very common in parks that have a lot of usage. As our parks have definitely increased in their usage over the last few years, we've all seen that increase. It's only a moment, a matter of time until that happens. And then we're requiring that all the bicycles, electric bikes, E-PAMDs and MAVs. To follow all city codes and rules while they're in the park. And then we direct readers of that ordinance back to the chapter three seventy-five. So that the definitions are exactly the same. We didn't want to put the definitions in both places. So we don't want any confusion. We want everyone being very clear exactly what's what. And then I'm going to turn this back over to Chief Andreski. There, there's very long sections for these. New bits have been put into the existing code. So we just wanted to pull out in layman's terms or layperson's terms exactly what it is. Because it's very hard when you go through to kind of see what's happening. So it's just a high level look.
Yes, so what we're saying in this section is that for somebody to have any type of. You know, vehicle, whether it's electric or otherwise on a roadway, that they would need to have a driver's license. Just like you would have to a motor vehicle. This doesn't count for if somebody's crossing the roadways, you know, to, you know, cross Old Bonham to get to a sidewalk or something like that. This is just actually writing these devices on the roadway. Which again, I think that that's where a lot of the concern is coming into parks or. The police department that people are seeing these really young kids on these devices all over the place and including in the roadway. So I think the concern is, of course, traffic crashes. We do have in several ordinances. Sections in there related to parental responsibility and parents being cited for allowing. Their children to do certain things that they shouldn't be. And this is included in this chapter as well. Where parents can be cited for allowing their children to essentially be writing on devices they shouldn't in places. Or allowing their children to be without helmets.
I'm curious, so I'm saying requires license to operate the motorized vehicles are class three. So we're saying class one and class two don't require a license.
Correct, yes.
Some of them look very similar to me, especially between class two and class three. How is an officer supposed to know if someone's riding a class two? Because they're going twenty miles an hour. It's a fancy looking bike. And what do you do?
Right, so this is where we've kind of talked about that this is probably going to be a much more responsive ordinance. Like a lot of ordinances, we're not going to have very proactive, you know, enforcement on speeds unless we really start to see some problem areas. It's just not that realistic for us to be doing all of the time. But as Beverly knows and did a lot of her research, these, these devices should be well marked on the outside of them. To show what class they are. So, you know, of course, not that people can't kind of create their own devices at home or. Mark out or modify, whatever. We, we definitely see that, but they should.
Shakers all over.
Yes, cover them up in some ways, but how they're manufactured, it should be very visible where those. Are the types of classes that they are.
Right. And I think the other thing that, that's helpful about all of this is as we push out public information, parents can start to, to learn that there's different classes. Because if you just order your child an electric vehicle off of Amazon, you may not know exactly what you're buying. So by us pushing this out, we had our first article out in the city newsletter. We're going to continue to do that to help people understand. We'll figure out what class you're buying before you buy it for your child. So they know exactly what's happening. I have not gone into the bike shops here and looked at electric bikes. So I don't know how they present that, but when I do go, that's probably one of the questions I'm going to ask is, you know, who are you seeing what's happening? Because it'd be, you know, it takes, it takes everyone helping everyone else to understand what, what the differences are.
When we say a license, we're talking about a standard license that you'd get that the Reserve Department revenue.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, so public education. It's a really, really important part of this. Because we want people to enjoy their bikes, have a good time, but we want them to do it in a safe way. And we also want other people to feel like we're paying attention to. Because when the calls come in, people say, well, do you know this is happening? And we really want people to know that we do know it's happening and we want everyone to be able to enjoy it. But in a safe and, safe insane ways, they used to say on our fireworks. So the first thing we're going to be rolling out in the parks are signs that have the speed limits on them. We have our adopted park master plan, or master park sign master plan. We have our park sign master plan. We'll be following that with the signs on the trails. You can see we have the Sassafras Trail sign there. We'll be putting medallions on there with the circle and the slash through that indicates no bikes. We currently don't have that on there now. We will be putting that on there. And then we'll be putting the speed limit signs on the pathways. The Greenway is supportive of this measure. They said some communities have already enacted this. Some communities have not. Where communities have enacted a speed limit, the Greenway fully supports it. And they also are now creating a region-wide group of Parks and Recreation Departments. To help them regulate some of the issues on the greenways. So they're, the first task force meeting is going to be this month. I'll be participating. Where everyone's just going to kind of share operations that are happening in their communities with the greenways. So I'm really excited that the Greenway is taking a proactive approach with that. Okay, then we'll be pushing out a lot of information through the city's media channels. So for example, we had an article and then we had a infographic in the last city newsletter. This infographic is also going to be posted up in all of the parks. It'll be up at the community center. We're also going to put it in the activity guide that goes out through Parks and Recreation. It may be condensed in there, but it'll have the QR code back. So we have a website set up that has all this information on there. And it also has links to where you can go and ride your bikes that aren't necessarily in all of it, or they may not know about. Particularly the dirt bikes. So there are dirt bike parks nearby. People can easily access them. They can ride the different greenways around. So there, and there are. Different options around that we put on their direct links for them. We also put direct links to e-bike smart, which is a nonprofit organization that people can go in and take an online. Class of how to be a safe rider and then take a little quiz. And you know, it was, I was very impressed by that. So that there, it's a two different organizations that are working hard. To get people to use their e-bikes responsibly. They're big proponents of e-bikes, but they want everyone to be safe. I will be putting Facebook posts out, Instagram posts, and at special events, we'll have other information. So we're happy to answer any further questions that you have. And I put this picture up. This is municipals a couple of years ago. And I love this picture because this is pre-COVID. But you notice the young man on the left-hand side was already riding an e-bike back then. You see the fat tires on there. And this is in the lower parking lot at Warsen that now has the Park Operations Center. So I just, I love this picture because it really shows a community and it shows. Working with the police department to educate our young riders. And you know, it'll be great having municipals again next year. So it'll be timely.
Also members, does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, I have a few questions. So ironically, on the way in, on Price, I saw two kids, probably fourteen, fifteen, maybe. Riding on one scooter, middle of the road, going pretty slowly, no lights, no nothing, no helmets. When people see something like that, what should they do?
So that was one of the issues with our ordinance, how they are written right now is. The police department really didn't have the ability to enforce anything. So we were getting these calls. We knew that it was a problem. But because there was nothing on the books that allowed for us to do enforcement. It was a little bit out of our hands, just depending on the situation. But I would say just from a police department perspective, when you see something like that, that's of a concern. We always just tell people to call our dispatch center so an officer can come out right away versus waiting thirty minutes because then they're gone. So yes, if you see something that's urgent like that, we always encourage people, please call right away so we can get an officer out.
And then new regulations would allow the police department to address the situation. Councilmember Solomon brought up?
Yes, a hundred percent. So that's kind of the goal here is that we would be able to follow through with enforcement action, whether that's with. The parent or the kids, just depending on their ages, you know, kind of dictates how we're able to deal with things.
Okay. And are class one and two bikes allowed on roads? Or are they only allowed on sidewalks and parks?
So.
Something, is that something we address?
Yes, so the class one and two. We have right now that they would not be allowed on roadways because they're more, you know, just.
Except, well, if the adults are ready though, it's okay, right? Yeah, though if they're over eighteen, where's that? That's where I'm confused.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, so a class one e-bike could be one that's being ridden by an adult. There, the classes are the motor, not the size of the frame. So I could ride, you could ride the one, two or three on the road. But a young child, I don't think when they're on a bicycle, they're allowed. What, what age are they allowed to ride away?
So it's not on a bicycle there.
Yeah, it's, I have bicycles, regular bicycles could be on the road, fourteen. So that's why, I'm curious why class one wouldn't be.
So that may be something that, you know, we can reach back out to Stephanie for clarification on how to address that. Yes, yeah, so.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah, yeah, excellent point.
Right, yep. And we do see, of course, here in Olivet too, there are some areas that have sidewalks, which is great. And then other places just don't. So sometimes getting from one place to another, you know, people are certainly a little bit limited, so.
Right. And this was an interesting ordinance for us to craft too, because there is no model for us. This is, this is new. It's new for a lot of communities. A lot, there are a lot of regulations on the coasts, not so much. In the center of the country. So I, I think that it will be a work in progress. And we have, we have a way to amend it as things come up. We can change it. Our code is a living document and we really want to stay right where we need to be. And if something needs to be later amended, we can absolutely do it.
We're already seeing updates and changes, even as soon as today with just.
Dirt bikes.
Dirt bike, you know, and then like changing, oh, there's more classes. And so I do feel like this is kind of going to be a little bit of an ongoing project for a while. We've seen a lot of other municipalities adopt ordinances. And already, of course, probably like us, having to go back and revisit as technology and. Product availability changes pretty quickly.
Right. And as things get new, new models get released, it changes everything. So we learned today about a dirt bike that can go thirty-eight miles an hour. Or more.
Yeah.
And some people consider it a class four. Other people say it's unclassified. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of language to deal with too, so.
I saw one online Mercedes is making a e-bike, goes up to forty-five miles per hour. Now, wow, you would want to go that fast on a bike. Baffles me, but if you can, you can.
Yeah, sounds expensive.
Well, thank you. I appreciate you guys addressing this.
So a question that I have is in relation to the MTDs, which seems like it's kind of the broadest definition. Of vehicle in our definitions. And in there, it includes hoverboards. And I guess I had a question about like hoverboards. And then there's also these one wheels. My son has a one wheel, so I know a little bit more about that one. He is licensed. But he wasn't when he first started on his one wheel. But those sorts of things like the hoverboards and some of the one wheels. So a one wheel is different than the image that, that you showed.
We showed the unit.
Right. They max out, like some of those hoverboards max out at like ten miles an hour. And some of the one wheels, his maxes out at fifteen miles an hour. So as I'm reading through the ordinance as it stands now. Let's say my daughter want, who's fifteen and unlicensed, wanted to ride his one wheel. On the road, she would not be allowed to do that. Is that correct?
So with a proposed ordinance, no. Currently what's on the books, yes, because essentially all of that is. Somewhat unregulated altogether right now.
I, I think that's where like, and I, I recognize that it is tricky to figure out. And you don't want to regulate each individual type. But with some of those devices that operate at capped speeds. That are. As a parent, like I look at it more as a toy than as a motor vehicle. And obviously I can't speak for other parents. But as a parent, looking at that, I think seems excessive. But I don't, don't know for those sorts of vehicles, how best to include them in this.
So it is, and we talked about it and Sydney Manager did send some of your questions, kind of concerns about it. And certainly we're not, you know, married to this current version. If there are some from the city, if there's updates that. The city wants to consider or discuss and, you know, with us or. with us or city manager, whoever um, to kind of think about some, some of those things. It is kind of difficult to stay out of the weeds on it because like you said, there's so many. You can get so in depth, like how far do you go down on listing and regulating? Um, but it is kind of hard, where, where do you split that? Um, where do you split that, like public safety versus, hey, we want the, our kids to be able to use, you know, green devices and have fun and all of those things? So I think it, you know, it is something the city should consider. Um, we did talk about changing some language to um, define, you know, if there you know, the city was interested in making some type of separation with types of streets, things like that. Um, I mean, it's feasible from the police department. Of course, we're most concerned about public safety. But as a, as a city too, I do think that's something to think about how what the city as a whole kind of wants this to look like for the public.
Yeah, yeah, so the, the e-bikes are easy because there's a, there's a regulation that's set by the industry with the classes. With the little hoverboards, differentiating them between the electric unicycle, that's really difficult because there is no agency classification that we found. Maybe it's out there. Um, because if, if we could regulate by the speed or the age of the person, that that might be a way to do it. But how do we create that? Because there isn't a model for us and there isn't something from the industry that we have found readily available. It may still be out there. But it could be that our toy classification has maybe some of the language that would cover some of those. You know, I think of the ones you open on Christmas morning, the little one that lights up and they just kind of go around. It's electric and they're in it. But it's not something they're necessarily gonna tool down the street in. Um, maybe the sidewalk, but not, maybe not commute to school on it. I'm, I'm not sure.
Um, so my sense from just conversations that I've had with other people and then listening as well as you shared about some of the complaints. My sense, and please correct me if I'm wrong or add on, is that the majority of complaints are um, safety issues when kids are on vehicles and they're just being ridiculous, like they've got three people on a scooter or whatever you said. Um, then you have some where you've got kids who are on what look like motorcycles. And I know living on Price, I have seen kids on things that look like motorcycles going up onto one wheel. Um, and you know, s- just dot, you know, speeding like crazy down price. Um, and I have seen on neighborhood chats that there's questions and concerns about that. And then the separate issue um, of pedestrian safety on park pathways when you've got um, anyone really on one of these electric bikes and they're just going way too fast for a shared use path.
Right, yeah, we're seeing a lot of the speed is in the pathway that goes between the houses between Dealman and Stacy and on the Greenway. People are going very fast and in clumps. So they cover the whole pathway. So if people are walking with their headphones, which they should not be, it's only a matter of time before something happens.
I think too, what you know, we're running into and as um, a council, he probably will too with this ordinance is, you know, you're especially with ordinances like this, you're gonna have people who are not happy on either side. It's kind of a no win ordinance, right? Because there's going to be people who think that the e-devices are terrific and, you know, we want to be a green city and allow everybody to have fun in our parks and areas. Um, and parents who are buying these devices that aren't always cheap for their kids to be able to get to in front of friends' houses, schools, things like that. And then you have another set of opinion that we don't like the looks of them, we think they're dangerous, we don't think that it's safe for the kids to be riding them. And so kind of no matter where you put them or what you do, you're gonna have one set of the community that likes their usage and another set that really doesn't. Um, so
On leashes comes to mind.
Dogs on leashes, yes, there's many of them. So I think you're, you know, going to really run into a split opinions on.
So I'm gonna ask the council, this item is on tonight for a second reading. Um, which typically the council would vote on. So I'm going to ask you if you are ready to vote on the bill as presented. Or if you are, would like to direct staff to go back and make some adjustments uh, specifically related to um, usage on residential streets. Um, and some of the questions about age and can they ride on the streets or not ride on the streets?
I think we can postpone for, until we get some more feedback on this and rather than voting on it.
Okay, so you would need a motion to table to the next regular city council meeting?
Yes, can I have a motion to table this, please?
Like to make a motion to table this till the next uh, city council meeting?
Do I have a second?
Second.
I'd like to just make a comment before we vote is that I think we have people in the audience and online who might want to offer um, public comment if that's, if this is the time for them to do that.
Um, typically, we allow public comments during public comment period. This is not a public hearing. Um, so they can certainly uh, email myself or Beverly Tucker Knight or Chief Andreski. There's also a second public comment section this evening. Um, and they can offer their comments this evening as well. Um, but this is not a public hearing because this is not in the zoning code, so it doesn't require a public hearing.
Okay.
Understood.
I just want to then apologize to people that I gave the wrong information for, um, because I know that people are wanting to speak and may not be really excited to stay until the end of the meeting.
Sure, and we are happy to take um, take their comments again if they would like to email any of us or stop by City Hall or, or provide their comments to you and you can share them with us. Uh, we're happy to, to listen and take their comments if, if they choose to get on with their day. Rather than wait till, wait till the end.
Okay.
So we've had a second to table this. Do we need to poll the council? Okay.
Uh, council member Lewis?
Yes.
Council member Pashan Helman?
Yes.
Council member Solomonov?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Motion is passed.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, we're going, going to uh, bill number thirty forty nine.
Bill thirty forty nine, an ordinance authorizing a special permit to Fisher Rosemont Systems Incorporated doing business as Emerson to contain outdoor storage of material and equipment on the property grounds assessed as ninety-three fifteen Olive Boulevard Zoned LID Light Industrial District, second reading and public hearing.
Okay. Uh, we are going to open this public hearing. Can we have a presentation, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, uh, Mayor, members of the council. My name's Carlos Trillo. I'm the Director of Planning and Community Development for the City of Olivet. And tonight here, I have a short presentation regarding the uh, bill uh, thirty forty nine. Uh, which is a special permit uh, request. Uh, one of these things about the bill and we were kind of talking about public hearings. I was going to talk about this prior to the conversation being brought up, but uh, within our land use code, uh, there are four uh, activities uh, in, in the land use code that require the council uh, to hold a public hearing. Uh, those are tax amendments, rezonings and special permits. Uh, in addition to that, the zoning board of appeals also has a public hearing when they consider variances. Those are called out on title four of our land use code. And within a public hearing, uh, the city is responsible to um, notify property owners within three hundred feet of the, well, actually a hundred and eighty-five feet uh, from the subject property. We traditionally do three hundred uh, in there and also post a notice in the, the uh, paper record uh, as adopted by the City of Olivet. Right now it's the county in the Saint Louis. Um, and there and uh, and all that. Um, within that public hearing, we kind of go over the, the, the request. And then uh, provide a recommendations usually from the Planning and Community Design Commission to the council. Uh, then we introduce the petitioners who's here today uh, in there and then following that, uh, an opportunity for public comment uh, in there and then for consideration of the council, uh, if they want to act or, or go through that process. Uh, that being said, um, this is a special permit request. Uh, this is regarding the property address is ninety-three fifteen Olive Boulevard, uh, which is operated by Fisher Rosemont Systems. Uh, which is a subsidiary of Emerson. On the next slide, uh, is a aerial view of the site. Uh, ninety-three fifteen Olive Boulevard, while addressed off of Olive, doesn't directly about Olive Boulevard. It used to, it used to have a long, uh, what we, we would call a kind of a, a, a neck that ran uh, between um, in, in telegraded and the US Bank. Uh, and there, but when the city acquired the streets, we also took over uh, the, the, their, their private property as part of the uh, Dealman Industrial Nid. Uh, in there, uh, ninety-three fifteen Olive Boulevard is twelve point six five acres. It is the largest private property we have in the city of Olivet. It has a hundred and twenty-eight thousand uh, plus uh, office warehouse building uh, in there. Though not the largest building in the city of Olivet, but the property in itself is the largest. Uh, what they're requesting is that they would like to utilize, uh, conduct some outdoor storage of metal shipping containers on the property grounds. Uh, the property is owned LID Light Industrial District and within our Light Industrial District, uh, if you're gonna store items permanently uh, outdoors, uh, you are required a special permit. And I'll go over what a special permit uh, is in that. And what that does that provide is the ability to, for the city to have uh, two levels of review. A review and recommendation by the cau- uh, by the Planning Community Design Commission, then ultimately consideration by the council. Uh, these uses generally have to be called out. Um, in there, but they're not guaranteed. There's no guarantee that the, the city would authorize them. And there is a process uh, in terms of how they're evaluated uh, outlined in our zoning ordinance. And uh, and again, uh, the council's delegated the, the plan commission to do the analysis and then forward the recommendation to that council. Uh, in there, on the next slide, I think uh, is the information regarding special permits uh, in there. PCDC again, our Planning and Community Design Commission reviews and recommends to this body. Council will hold a public hearing and action on via an ordinance. Uh, what's the purpose of the special permit? It's a basis to determine suitability. Uh, these uses while compatible with, with the underlying zoning district may not necessarily be ideal for specific sites and uh, through the commission, the council has the right to be selective on where these uh, should be located. They're not permitted unless determined by both commission and council to be suitable. And the city reserves the right to deny or even evoke uh, a use once it's been authorized. These uses are somewhat unique. Again, uh, best example is a child daycare center. There are levels of review in a child daycare center, so you may permit them in a commercial district. But they also need state approvals. There's also special building code requirements. And that gives that whole process to get additional analysis and review and make sure that the uh, that it's an ideal. We apply the same thing to outdoor storage in our industrial park. Uh, when we evaluate a special permit use, we look at its potential impact. Is, you know, what type of district it's in? Uh, does it support the goals and objectives of our comprehensive plan? Uh, is it suitable for the site? What is the impact to the surroundings? And the city reserves the right to mitigate uh, any of these concerns i- if it chooses so through buffers, architecture, uh, consideration of open spaces or other type of limitations. And again, we look at our comprehensive plan for guidance and then of course the purpose and intent of the induc- the, the, the underlying zoning district, in this case, the Light Industrial District. The next slide will highlight the general conditions that I kind of went over. Uh, it has to go through a site plan review through our plan commission. It has to be listed into zoning district, has to further the goals of the comprehensive plan or be compatible with those goals. Has to be suitable to its environment and surroundings. Again, a daycare or center may be fine on a three acre lot, but may not be ideal on a ten thousand acre or ten thousand square foot lot. Uh, and there, uh, has to be complimentary to its neighboring uses and architecture. They have to consider mitigations if there's any spillover effects. The city has the authority to require buffering, aesthetic enhancements, designate areas for open spaces or set limitations. And then we always ensure that, you know, that it's suitable for the provision of public services, whether that's fire, police support uh, a- and all that. Uh, on the next slide, uh, we have the, the location. Again, it is off of what, uh, uh, Dealman Industrial and what we once called a Bellway, which is now the extension of Alice Place. Uh, you'll see a little bit to the south, uh, or the, uh, lower slide, the property used to go all the way to Olive Boulevard. But it's a triangular piece of lot, has a hundred and twenty-eight thousand square foot building. Uh, and there, it is uh, abutted by uh, roadway on the south, Dealman Industrial and Bellway. Uh, Walters Way, which services two parcels on the west side, which is the left side of the slide. And then there's the old railroad right away on the right side of the slide. And then uh, North Price Road uh, in there. Uh, the location will be towards the back of the building where they already have an existing generator. And uh, I believe there are some um, uh, uh, vehicle charging units uh, that are placed back there. Uh, and there, uh, a close up on the left hand of the slide, kind of showing the uh, the, the generator uh, on, on the site grounds and where the proposed uh, uh, storage containers would be placed. Uh, within their parking fields along the, the furthest uh, uh, two full parking islands uh, on that parcel ground. Uh, the next slide uh, is just a visual view from Walters Way. There is a street, uh, there, it's a substandard street that we'd acquired during the Dealman Industrial uh, Improvement District uh, in there that services two parcels that are west of this property. Uh, and there, one is undeveloped, the other one is the um, the um, Arch Art, Arch Art uh, facility. Uh, the surrounding property owners all have uh, outdoor storage permits that have been authorized. Uh, including Auto Beauty, which is to the east. Uh, Murphy, which is also to the east, uh, Bazan. Uh, which is kind of is in a corner often there that they do some uh, painting and, and offsite improvements. Uh, also in the east and then on the west side. Um, uh, Saint Louis, uh, Arch Art also has uh, authorizations for outdoor storage. And then across the street to the south of this is Intelligrated and they also have authorization for outdoor storage. On the next slide, uh, you'll see uh, the commission considered this at their meeting uh, on June twenty-six. Uh, the original request was, uh, as illustrated was for four uh, storage containers. Uh, after discussion with the commission, uh, we hadn't uh, encouraged the commission to increase that number to eight and that was kind of being proactive based on the recommendations for our comprehensive plan. Uh, to make uh, some flexibility and this is an important site. Uh, and there, it's not from, for their requests. Uh, but hopefully business would be good, that this would be expanded and that there would be an opportunity in there. Uh, we also looked at just designating a specific area. We gave them three different options. The request, up to eight, or just identifying an area that would be permitted. Uh, in there, in this case, the commission went with the middle and that was the eight uh, storage uh, metal uh, containers uh, in that back area. Uh, the location was as illustrated in the petition, uh, all outdoor storage items to be maintained within the, the containers themselves. The height not to exceed a, a single container height. Uh, and then the commission authorized that it was not necessary to have any visual screening, fencing and landscaping required. I know there's a question on that and I'll get to that. Uh, later, but within the, the code itself, it, it authorizes the commission to make that consideration. Uh, and they're in discussions with that. We did talk about uh, the screening and uh, it was a staff recommendation. Uh, given its location, uh, that we, we thought this would be uh, uh, appropriate. Uh, without the screening, I'll get into further detail when we get to some of those questions uh, in there. The next slide. Uh, we did receive uh, several comments and I do appreciate getting some advance notice uh, on these to, to be able to prepare. Uh, and there are these, some of these were shared with the, with the petitioners, so they would be able to better understand. On there, a lot of these were based on operations. Uh, there was some uh, inquiries about the containers, that they would just be placed on the asphalt or there'd be some type of special base on them. Uh, and there, the containers don't necessarily move. They would be laid on the asphalt surface uh, in the parking, uh, in the parking area uh, in there. Uh, there was inquiries about noise when they're being loaded or they're being shipped, uh, which they're not shipped. Uh, you know, what type of noise considerations are, are given in, in there, how, you know, what, what, what do, you know, what do they consider? Um, in there, they're generally, uh, you know, it's uh, equipment that's brought in and brought out and taken into the site. Uh, there was inquiries, there was some assumption that the containers are, are loaded and then moved offsite. Uh, no, they, they're not, they're not, they're, they're maintained on the site primarily uh, in there and uh, the concern about that they were, whether they would damage roads or surfaces, uh, does not appear that that would happen in there. Uh, like the petitioner get into a little bit more detail on that. Um, there was an inquiry about the impact uh, and how it would look uh, for the future Greenway. Uh, a good question and there, unfortunately, we don't, we're not at the level that we have the design of the Greenway. The uh, the, the, the trail where it will go through um, kind of does a mound and it's still, we, we're still not sure whether the trail is gonna be placed on top of the mound or whether that mound is gonna get leveled uh, or so. So when you're at Auto Beauty Specialists, um, the trail goes up the height about midway of the building and then heads, heads on The trail goes up the height about midway of the building and then heads heads on back. If they maintain that elevation. You know, maybe some landscaping would be appropriate, but fencing would would because you'd be you'd be higher. Than 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 that and it would exceed, you know. Even an eight foot fence would would probably not provide any screening and then these containers will probably be about ten feet in height. And there I think it's a good thing to consider when we're in discussions with the greenway as they get into the design phase. And maybe work with the petitioner at that point in there, but without knowing the design and where that's going to go. It would be hard to kind of get a consideration of what would be the most effective and and screening to provide. Others questions were whether other sites required visual screening. Majority of them all do visual screening for others has been just that they're fenced enclosed. There's a couple of sites that do have slats. But it was more defining the perimeter. In this case, in this location, unlike the others, it doesn't about a street. And there and it's the container itself that's kind of providing the screening of the of what the equipment they want to put put in place. I think it's a good question, but I think, you know, in in this case, it was described to us that it's the the materials and equipment that would be the the purposes of containers is. Is to store the the equipment is not to have it out on the surface. If there was consideration about vehicle access onto the site and then traffic circulation. And there and yes, we did have discussions with the fire marshal regarding regarding that. That was the other consideration about whether there was a need for for fencing in terms of trying to. Like minimize i- if these containers were being moved or or so how that would come in. And then how not to impede on the fire department circulation around the the site. And there were other alternative locations looked at. We did have a this preliminary discussion before the petition was submitted. We understood where the location was and why that area was chosen and it was up by the generator. Site at that place. And the increase in the number was again in discussions with the commission. We were hoping to be a little bit more proactive. We understood that their their need right now is for. And whether if this business does boom and 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 does well. In an effort to avoid having to come back through another process to allow an increase, the commission was fine. Increasing that to eight, but not to an unlimited number. And then if they're permanent, you know, if they would consider landscaping, the petitioner is here. In there and we can talk to him about the the opportunities there. I think it would be best to find out. In as we get through the design phase of the 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 by quarter, what would be the most effective. Improvement and in in that process. So those were a couple of the questions that we received. I'd be glad to go over more specifics or if I didn't address the the core of the question to let me know. And then also on the next slide. This is a public hearing and it is a formal process that is conducted through the council. And that we're required to ensure that there are certain items that are entered into the record. To show that if there was ever any litigation that we did follow our procedures and our purposes. And we all always enter items for the record towards the end. In this case, our twenty twenty four comprehensive plan update, including the five year economic development plan. The Olivet municipal code and zoning map, including section four hundred eight forty special permits, which authorize outdoor storage of materials and equipment under paragraph twenty two. This staff presentation and the staff presentation and memorandum to the plan commission dated June twenty six twenty twenty five. Including the all the attachments, which was a petition and the supporting plans and documents. The public hearing notice is always important to ensure that it's entered into the record. That includes the affidavit of publication, which shows proof that the city did post a hearing notice in the city's. Adopted newspaper and that was posted July seventh twenty twenty five, which we were required to do that fifty twenty fifteen days prior to tonight's meeting. And then this presentation before the city council on July twenty second twenty twenty five. Mayor, that concludes the the formal presentation and I'd be glad to answer any specific questions. I do have a representative here from I'd like to introduce, but. All right, I have Michael Niddles, who's the director of our site. And then you've probably have seen Mr. Niddles at the coffee of the mayor and he's attended a whole bunch of different functions also throughout the city. So, Mr. Niddles.
Good evening, council members. I appreciate you entertaining this petition from on behalf of Emerson. So I please feel free to ask any questions or concern you might have on the proposal.
So will these be accessed primarily by people walking? Like folks in the main building that are going out to get supplies and coming back in? Or will they primarily be accessed by like delivery vehicles or?
So generally speaking, it will be storing raw materials and packing materials for when we have our peak demands in the spring and fall. And it will be people with pallet jacks or maybe a fork truck that comes out of the main building to obtain those materials and then take them back into the building for production.
Okay. That just helps with kind of getting a sense of how. How they're going to be used because it's it's a different sort of storage use, I think, than at least what I've been exposed to. So I have primary concerns about the visual impact on the greenway. Knowing that it is planned to come through and we don't yet know the timing on it. But that that strip of land that's where the old train tracks were is where that greenway will come. And so for me, I'm trying to envision, we've got, you know, people who maybe are new to Olivet. Or coming through Olivet and wanting to have the best presentation of the area that they're riding and walking through on the greenway as possible. And so just trying to think through ways to not hide. Shipping containers because I don't know that there's really any way that you can hide a shipping container. But to make it a little bit. To soften the visual impact of. You know, I'm imagining eight of these if you're at your peak. Having them, you know, stacked out into the parking lot. So that's where my primary concerns come from. But I recognize the the need and the value of having onsite storage. But just want to be sure that we're forward thinking in how we do this. So that we don't potentially have a visual problem.
Sure, sure.
And then the the other piece with storage, shipping containers of this sort is the. It's a large canvas. For potential graffiti tagging, things like that. Do you anticipate having security cameras or additional lighting for those?
So, yeah, if you could, let me go back and kind of talk about some of our plans, thinking through this. The location was selected because it is close to the generator, which is already kind of a large metal cube. So it would really blend with that. And it's also part of our plan to paint these a neutral color that would be complimentary to the building and or generator it sits by. So from a, you know, I agree that it's still a shipping container, but a painted neutral color shipping container up against the the existing. Generator should should help it blend somewhat pretty easily. And then the other piece about, you know, tagging, of course, if it were to get any kind of vandalism, we would, of course, repaint and and cover that up. But the site does have twenty four seven security that we have hired onsite. We do have security cameras on the premises, on the exterior and the parking lot and 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 regular patrols across all three shifts of our security team. So from that perspective, it's I think as best as we could do to to try to protect that. But for sure, if if anything, any of the building or the 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 container itself or anything on the property would become, you know, vandalized. We would definitely as as, you know, occupants of the space be on top of trying to reestablish. I mean, we have probably on average of thirty to forty customers we host per week, so we we take a lot of pride in the site as well. So I, you know, I would I would give my shirts as much as I can that we would, we would take as much pride in making sure that that's kept up if anything like that would happen.
Carlos, if for items like this that are added onto the property, do they then fall under the same codes and ordinances for ongoing maintenance and upkeep? That's the primary building would.
Yes, this there to be two components, one, the the individual structure itself and then the site as itself in there. So if there were issues of, you know. Blowing debris and or trash, you know, we would direct that were directly associated with it, we would contact Emerson. Same thing if it'd be hard to to notice like the police department would probably get. Called in first that there was some graffiti or markings in there before my staff would be back there. In there because it is, it is a pretty large site and it is pretty well tucked in. In there and until the bike trail comes into place. You know, the the visibility is pretty limited unless you're going to that one company down Walters Way. Typically, we don't, I don't want to say we don't give the impression we don't go down there, but there there's not much activity that that takes place down that that's.
Okay, there any, is there anyone in the audience that would like to say anything? Anybody online? Okay, we're going to close this hearing. I would entertain a motion to approve.
We'll make a motion. Available to me. I make a motion to approve bill thirty forty nine and ordinance authorizing a special permit to Fisher Rosemont Systems, Inc. Doing business as Emerson to contain outdoor storage of materials and equipment on the property grounds. Addressed as ninety three fifteen Olive Boulevard zoned L I D light industrial district.
Second. Okay, can we please pull the council?
Council member Lewis.
Yes.
Council member Pashon Hellman.
Yes.
Council member Solomonoff.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
The motion is passed. Bill thirty forty nine becomes ordinance twenty eight eighteen.
Thank you very much, sir. All right, we're going to go on to. Twenty twenty five dash two six one.
Resolution twenty twenty five dash two six one, a resolution of the city of Olivet, Missouri, supporting the Missouri Blue Shield program.
Good evening again, council and Mr. Mayor Beth Andreski, Chief of Police. You have to see me one more time for this too. Apologize. So. The Missouri Blue Shield Pro or yeah, no, we're on the waste. I'm sorry. Yes, no blue shield. I apologize. The Missouri Blue Shield Program. I believe that probably some of you guys have heard about it. There's been some neighboring cities in the St. Louis area and all over the state that have been designated as Blue Shield Cities. In order to get this Blue Shield designation, police departments are required to meet certain criteria. One of those things is basically a resolution. For the city to commit to supporting public safety and partnership with the police department. The other things required for this designation, for the most part, the police department is already doing. We've been doing as far as reporting and other things required. The only other thing that we're currently working on is updating our recruitment and retention. Policy. We do have one in place, but again, just needing some general updates. As far as funding towards public safety, we're able to share that and our partnerships with the communities and other agencies. Crime reduction programs, all of those things we are already actively doing. So this resolution is kind of one of those last steps in the process for applying for the Blue Shield designation. It did come to applications to come to a close in June, but we anticipate that they are going to, applications are going to. Open back up in our F Y twenty six, at which time we would apply for that designation. And basically this designation allows us the ability to apply for certain state grants. For law enforcement training and equipment that we would not otherwise be eligible to apply for. So there's no funding request at this time for the for it. I'm happy to ask, answer any questions, but otherwise I would just ask the council to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash two six one. To pursue the Blue Shield designation.
Counsel, do you have any questions?
I would just note that the reason we haven't done this before is that this is a new initiative from Governor Kehoe. So this is relatively new within the last couple of months of of him taking office as the governor. So.
That's correct.
Stood. All right, well, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash two six one to pursue a Blue Shield designation.
A second.
Okay, we'll go ahead and poll the council.
Council member Lewis.
Yes.
Council member Pashon Hellman.
Yes.
Council member Solomonoff.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
The motion is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we're going to go on to resolution twenty twenty five dash two six two.
Resolution twenty twenty five dash two six two, grant resolution for the great Olivet cleanout.
Okay, now this is the last you have to hear from me again, Chief Beth Andreski, Olivet Police Department. So we again have scheduled, it's on the books to. Hold the next Olivet or Great Olivet Cleanout for October twentieth of this year. As most of you probably know, we've been doing this for many years now. And the last handful of years, we've applied for a grant through Saint Louis County to basically fund staffing and. Payments for the companies who come out and do the e-waste and shredding. The last few years we have received those grant funds. We have budgeted for it, but this would be a reimbursement from the county if approved again. I don't anticipate any reason why we would not be approved. So just a little bit about the great Olivet cleanouts. It is a day where residents, people in the community can bring their electronic, you know, trash, computers. Printers, old electronic devices of all sorts, as well as bringing their paper products that they maybe have been hanging on to for who knows how long. And they are shredded, things are shredded, done onsite. People can watch that all happen. And we have done it in the past at Stacy Park. And if you've been there during that time, you can see that it has become a very popular event and people in the community love this one. So it gets busier and busier each year, but it's great that people are coming out and looking for ways to recycle. And we have a place for them once a year to do that. So the again, the city is budgeted for this, so this would be a reimbursement grant after we after we finish the project. I would request the council to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash two six two to authorize the city manager to sign and execute a contract. Accepting the grant funds from St. Louis County Department of Public Health if it is awarded.
And Beth, what are the hours?
I'm sorry, the is October twentieth, three to six P M.
Three to six P M. And that's you typically schedule it on a day that Old Bottom School is not in session or they have a half day.
Correct, yes.
Okay. Is there any questions from the council?
I can tell you, I personally have a box. I'm sitting in the grass with old electronics safe all year for this one event.
October twentieth. Bring them out.
We have a question.
This is something not necessarily for this year, but since this is ongoing, something that I have heard that other municipalities do during their e-waste collection. Is also paint collection. And there's an organization in Saint Louis called Paint Busters that will partner. So something to possibly look into in the future.
Beverly from Parks and Rec did mention recently something regarding the paint waste. So I think it is something that we would explore. I don't know. We're kind of at capacity right now with being able to hold this event. But it is something we've recently talked about that that may be something on the radar to participate in.
And then one other thing that we certainly don't have capacity for in the the way that it's modeled now, but potential future thinking perhaps. I've also heard of municipalities doing what they call a repair fair at the same time. So that's where there's an organization called Perennial that works with folks to help, whether it's repairing clothes. Or repairing computers or repairing furniture. It's it's a neat sort of idea. Again, for future, future thoughts, future ideas.
Sounds good. Appreciate it.
Do we have any other questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash two six two to authorize the city manager to sign and execute the contract. Accepting grant funds from the Saint Louis County Department of Public Health if awarded.
Second.
Okay, can we please pull the council?
Council member Lewis.
Yes.
Council member Pashon Hellman.
Yes.
Council member Solomonoff.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Okay, we're going to go into item number thirteen, request for approval for a server replacement.
Good evening. Once again, mayor and council, we have some housekeeping thing of a request for the replacement of a server up in in the police department. This is the only server that the police department has now. And it's on a regular five to six year replacement schedule and this is the year. It is in front of us, in front of you tonight because it's over ten thousand, an item over ten thousand dollars. And so it would be with certified nets. And so it would be with Certified Nets, who is our uh MSP or the managed service provider for our ITs. So.
Okay, do we have any questions from the council?
I may have asked before, I apologize. Here's why we're doing a physical ser- it's this physical server versus using, you know, a SaaS solution or a web solution.
We have um the, I I think this may be our last set of servers uh in for the operation side. I don't know what um what that would mean for our police department, but I think this may be our last set.
Okay, I'm just curious, just I play in this space.
Great question, and it's something we ask, ask quite a bit, yeah. And to piggyback off of that, um is it backed up somewhere else if this is our only police server? Yes. Okay. Yeah, the MSP, our MSP, Certified Nets takes care of uh those, so fifteen minute increments to the days and weeks and then months and offsite, yes, oh, yep.
Okay, I will welcome a a motion to approve.
I'd like to make a motion to approve uh of agreement with Certified Nets in an amount not to exceed sixteen thousand dollars for the purchase and installation of a Dell server.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, can we please poll the council?
Council member Lewis.
Yes.
Council member Pashon Hellman.
Yes.
Council member Solomonov.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
Motion is passed.
I will have one thing to add here is that our our police department regionally through Regis has one of uh a very centralized and more of a SaaS whereas a SaaS model that they've used for decades. And a lot of that information is housed at Regis. What we have here is file storage and a lot of like the PDFs of the reports themselves, the paperless part. So that's another reason I would say this may be our last set.
Yeah.
Because it's a, it's a good question though, but they they have followed that model for a long time.
Yeah.
Okay, we're going on to item number fourteen, hearing from citizens part two. Is anyone in the audience or online like to ask a question? Seeing none, we'll go into item number fifteen, review and acceptance of minutes. Uh were there any corrections to the minutes that anyone saw? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the minutes from uh July eighth, twenty twenty five.
Second.
Okay, can we please poll the council?
Council member Lewis.
Yes.
Council member Pashon Hellman.
Yes.
Council member Solomonov.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Right, on to item number sixteen, city attorney's report.
No report this evening, but we will need a closed session, please.
Right. Good number seventeen. We're going to a executive closed session. I'd like to get a motion to go into closed session for attorney-client privilege matters.
I'll make a motion to move to executive closed session pursuant to revised statutes of the State of Missouri to discuss attorney-client privileges matters pursuant to section six one zero dot zero two one one.
Second.
All right, can we please poll the council?
Council member Lewis.
Yes.
Council member Pashon Hellman.
Yes.
Council member Solomonov.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, we are back from closed session. No major decisions were made. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we are now adjourned.